Welcome to the nineteenth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your phone and when you come to the speaker, please speak and spell your name clearly. And speaking to the microphone, I see we have some minutes to approve. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I make a motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the ninth meeting eight twenty-eight two thousand twenty-five.
Second. So it moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular and executive session minutes of the ninth meeting of eight slash twenty-eight slash twenty-five. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the minutes are approved. Okay, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two five dash zero one seven one six from Royal Village Investment.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Robin Melton on behalf of the applicant. And to my right is Ru Jun Tang, R U J U N T A N G, the president of the application. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for this submission of this application.
Okay, is there anyone who'd like to testify therefore against this applicant? Seeing none, Commissioners, any questions?
No question. Make a motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one seven one six, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one seven one six. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number two, application number two six dash zero zero eight seven two dash one to two six dash zero zero eight seven two dash five. From Village Events LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Kevin Yu, K E V I N Y U, and I'm one of the partners at Village Events LLC.
You talk us through your event?
Yes, so we hold a weekly night market where we invite local food and craft vendors to the old Sears parking lot at Proridge Center. We have a barricaded enclosed area where we operate a outdoor bar serving soft drinks, beers, cocktails, et cetera.
All right, Commissioners, questions?
No questions.
How long have you been doing this? I believe it's gonna be a little over our second year now.
Second year now, yeah. No incidents or issues?
No incidents, no, yeah. Outside of just, outside of our event, but all right, yeah, nothing.
But you noted that about two thousand attendees you expect?
Uh, we estimate, but lately, just, you know, we have our season, so it's probably less than those numbers at the moment just because of traveling and holidays and things like that.
Has that been typical to most of your events that you that you hold there?
Roughly, on average, the new space that we moved to is larger, so it can house that many people. But it just differs from weekend to weekend, month to month.
You identified you've got about four security personnel. You believe that's enough to manage that amount of people?
Yeah, we have an enclosed space. It's closed off by barricades and then the security patrols the area as well as where most of our consumers go in and out in the front.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve application numbers two six dash zero zero eight seven two dash one to two six dash zero zero eight seven two dash five inclusive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero eight seven two dash one to two six dash zero zero eight seven two dash five. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
I give someone the heat.
Calling agenda, item number three, application number two six dash zero zero nine three three from the Democratic Party of Hawaii.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and those of the Commission. My name is Phil Roak. I'm the Executive Director for the Democratic Party of Hawaii. That's Phil P H I L Roak.
Right, uh, can you talk us through your event?
Uh, so we're going to be hosting a holiday party at the Inspirational Hawaii Museum on nine hundred Richard Street. So, um, you know, we're expecting about a hundred people, hundred, hundred twenty-five people at the most. And we're simply going to be having it open to the public with a suggested donation of about twenty dollars, twenty, twenty-five dollars. Um, just because it's a holiday party, I believe that we are expecting that there could be, um, folks who may be underage that attend the event. We're expecting maybe like, like college democrats or high school democrats, but, you know, all politically aligned. So our, our plan, we have a security plan right now, but it'll primarily be around, you know, ID checking and then giving folks on like colored bands to indicate if they are of legal age to drink. And we are only gonna have one bar and then it's going to only be serving like poured wine and like canned, canned beverages. And found out beverages and then folks will be given two drink tickets. With no option to buy extra.
Pardon?
With no options to buy additional.
And you expect minors to attend?
Um, we, we are just planning for just because it's a holiday party, so you know, like the kapuna might bring like, like, you know, their children or like somebody who might be like of high school age. We, we aren't intentionally inviting anybody or like opening it up to minors, but just because it's the holiday party and there's expectation that they might bring family. We are just keeping that.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero nine three three, second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero nine three three. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number four, application number two six dash zero zero nine six two dash one to two six dash zero zero nine six two dash two two. From Malim, Mali?
Mali Mala.
Maka. Did I not write this out?
I know, I apologize, this is the name of a street owner and that's the LLC he went with, uh, correct, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stephen Kobo for Mali Mila Maka LLC. Um, I apologize that my client is not here today. He's actually running a bar. Uh, we have no changes to the, um, to the report. Um, these specials are meant to bridge us between waiting to get our preliminary during, that hasn't happened yet. Uh, and we are running out on the ten, this ten number two, uh, next week.
And are you going to, oh, you will.
Yeah, we're all gonna, I'll be back a little bit.
Now, we're gonna call you right here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any questions?
I have no questions.
Make a motion to approve applications number two six, two six dash zero zero nine six two dash one to two six dash zero zero nine six two dash two two inclusive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero nine six two dash one to two six dash zero zero nine six two dash two two. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Calling out of order, agenda item number eighteen, request number two six dash zero zero nine six three from Mali Mila Maka LLC.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Devin Kober, you're representing Mali Mila Maka LLC. Um, this is to request, um, for the help with, um, the specials. Um, it's just, it's, it's a lot. Um, the owner is a, I mean, he's running the thing by himself pretty much. So the idea that it's gonna cost that much money was kind of freaking him out a little bit, so I told him that we could make this request to try and help him out.
We have everything into the administration.
Yes.
So when was, the only question I would, I was looking at this, when was your last, or when was your client's last discussion with administration? Because I don't see anything listed about if there was any.
Yeah, we actually have, we turned everything in. Uh, we had some minor things that needed to be, that they needed to get. We got those in within the week. Uh, and then it's just sort of a waiting game. Uh, I told them, we just have to wait when, you know, when they're done with, looking at everything, they'll let us know. But we haven't even had actually the preliminary inspection yet. The submission was in March? Yes.
And last contact was September?
Yes. Actually, I think I, I think I emailed, uh, the investigator about a month ago. And he said we were number fifteen on the list of things that we needed to do.
All right.
Make a motion to approve request number two six dash zero nine six three, second?
Then moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero nine six three, any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. Uh, the request is approved and we can go on to number five.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number five, applications number two six dash zero zero nine seven zero zero dash one to two six dash zero zero nine seven zero dash eight from Pink Rabbit LLC.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners, Devin Kober here for Pink Rabbit LLC. Unfortunately, the owner, Paul, uh, Foley, is unable to be here today. She actually called me, uh, right before I got here saying, I, I have to do payroll. So I said, it's, it's fine, don't worry about it. Uh, this is to cover us, uh, up until we have our, um, final hearing, which is gonna be in January.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve applications numbers two six dash zero zero nine seven zero dash one to two six dash zero zero nine seven zero dash eight inclusive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero nine seven zero dash one to two six dash zero zero nine seven zero dash eight. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Now calling out of order, agenda item number nineteen, request number two six dash zero zero nine seven one from Pink Rabbit LLC.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Devin Kober here for, uh, Pink Rabbit LLC. Um, this is merely to cover the fees. Um, it's been kind of a journey for her to get this done. And again, she's a single owner of the restaurant. She also owns Red, uh, yeah, uh, Red Elephant as well, which is a tireless truck. Take a motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero nine seven one, second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero nine seven one, any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Going back to our, oh, oh, yeah. Uh, calling agenda item number six, application number two six dash zero one zero five four from Adult Friends for You.
So, Mr. Chair, before, um, they move on, I will make a disclosure. ILWU does represent the employees at Aloha Hilo Resort Waikiki Beach. I'm not their direct representative and this will not, um, this will not allow me to be impartial in regarding this matter.
Okay, noted?
Hi, Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members. Yes, uh, my name is Lisa Tomashiro, L I S A T A M A S H I R O from Adult Friends for You.
I'm Deborah Spencer Chan, D E B O R H S P N C E R hyphen C H U A.
Maka's through your event with a wine toss.
So the event is, um, the purpose of the event is a celebration of youth. This is our thirty-ninth year for our nonprofit agency. We highlight the transformation of, you know, of youth who are high risk, right? And transform their lives and we do have other, um, honorees who's just been great supporters of the youth. Uh, and so there is a silent auction, that's, um, the items will be there. Uh, and then we do have a live auction as well, but the, uh, ring toss, um, so.
I would wait, I would wait only because that's two separate agenda items, fifteen and sixteen, so we're waiting now, only talking about your special license for your fundraiser.
Thanks. Go ahead.
So what is your security plan for, um, individuals going to be in there? You're gonna be banning everyone that's over twenty-one? Or is it just a twenty-one event only?
So the only, um, minors there are the ones that are attending with their parents. There's usually the wardies and then their kids. And then the other minors is our students that are helping, but they're assigned to, to staff.
Okay.
To do specific duties.
So no chance they'll be served, right?
We, we have a, like a.
The, the bar is served by the Aloha Hilo, so.
So looking at the, the, um, chart here, the red outlined area, is that a barricade or is it just identifying where the bar?
It's, um, the bar plus like where, um, the wine, we, you know, we just kind of display the wines that are, because our silent auction is online, but just so that people can see it. We're just, it's just like that area.
So you're gonna be using the whole ballroom space or just that area?
So we have the entire bar.
We have everything.
Okay.
Yeah, but just that area is licensed.
Uh, can you clarify for me, uh, it says during the event, there will be bar stations. And they are not open to any staff, volunteers, or youth helpers.
So the Aloha Hilo bars, yeah, so the staffing and the, the youth are not allowed to be served from our direction.
That's the ones in, within the licensed area, right, or the?
Yes, the Aloha Hilo bars, yes.
So it's just gonna be confined to that one area?
Uh, where, um, yeah, that's where the bars are located, like just the two stations.
Anybody wants to consume will go to the.
That's, that's gonna be the question. Okay, so, okay, so first things are first.
Yeah.
When we look at the floor plan, anything that you put red, that's kind of where only liquor can be.
Consumed.
Consumed. So if you're gonna use the whole ballroom.
Okay, we did.
Okay, no, no, so that's why we would say, right, is if this event continues to move forward, which I'm not going to say, I'm not going to support the event. You would need to at least provide us with an updated floor plan, where kind of the whole ballroom you're going to use would be where people can consume alcohol.
Okay.
Because obviously if you only use that floor plan and someone walks outside of that, if we were to come and check it, there could be an issue.
Okay.
We don't want that for your event.
Yeah, we kind of was like, yeah, where were things were sold, so.
Okay, so that was kind of where I think all of our, all of our questions were getting to.
Okay, okay.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I have no other questions.
Move to approve pending updated floor plans.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero one zero five four pending updated floor plan, second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero one zero five four, uh, as amended with a floor plan update. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. All right. Now, on to, agenda item number fifteen. Uh, request number two six dash zero one zero five three, Adult Friends for You, uh, DBA Adult Friends for You. You have to do the whole thing over, we just.
Oh, okay, okay, so let's just say the name, everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing like you did.
Okay, all right. Aloha, my name is Lisa Tomashiro, L I S A T A M A S H I R O from Adult Friends for You.
Deborah Spencer Chan, D E B O R H S P N C E R hyphen C H U A.
And I'll make the same disclosure as I previously made. Now, we represent the, the members that work at Aloha Hilo. I'm not their direct representative. And this will not, um, impact me in being impartial in deciding on this matter.
Okay, noted, and now we can discuss.
Ring toss.
The ring toss.
Yes. Okay, so, um, we are, we do have all these wine bottles, um, that some will be in the silent auction, but they're also just completely donated by board members and just other supporters. Um, however, the ring toss is, um, the guests are actually tossing the rings on like soda bottles. And so they're paying the thirty dollars to play on the soda bottles. And if they would like to exchange it with the wine bottle, then that is up to them. Otherwise, it's just a donation to play. And then.
Yeah, you can keep.
Okay, so, okay, so, okay, so the, the harder part you have, right, in, in any of this discussion in regards to games, right? Anytime there's a game that you may play, right? That offers a possibility of a prize of getting a free alcoholic beverage or something, that's kind of set up against the rules in a sense, right? Because technically we have, right, if you lay it right, the licensee of any premises license show, sell liquor or consume liquor on the premises or shall encourage or permit any game or contest that involves the consumption of alcohol or the awarding of an alcoholic prize, okay? So I mean, we've done, and I think we've numerously given, um, silent auction approvals to everything. The hard part you have on this side, right, is that people that are paying and tossing a ring, if they win, technically they could then go get a prize of alcohol. And that's a concern for me, because I, I don't know if I wanna open up the whole idea of games like that being able to be used to provide, alcoholic beverages. But I do also know that in the past, many years ago, I think Spartan Race tried to sell you a ticket and you got a free alcohol. If you want a ticket, we didn't allow that either. So there is some things that have happened in the past, but some of these things, right, um, that would be kind of a difficult, I mean, for me anyway, because I think then you open up the floor to gamut of people wanting to put in any kind of games. Let's make, let's say, you, um, throw fuzzy dice and you get, uh, six, uh, two sixes, you're gonna be able to go ahead and choose for an alcoholic beverage. I mean, that's my, kind of my concern about opening a game to allow you to win a prize that is possibly alcohol. Because you said they could make a choice not to, but they might.
I would echo the same thing. It's kind of like game of chance. So it's, in a sense, a sort of gambling kind of thing, uh, even if you allow the option. The ultimate prize could be one bottle, two bottle, three bottles, who knows? Um, you might wanna reconfigure that type of game.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm open to that, if you wanna talk about it. I think we should at least have some understanding on what the rule, because what I read is exactly what the rule states.
Yeah.
I don't want, you know what I mean? I mean, I think we've proven we're pretty open to any kinds of things and giving chances, but I think this is a little bit difficult.
Yeah.
To a certain degree.
What do we kind of discuss? So we're gonna go into, the Commission may go into executive session for the following reasons pursuant to Hawaii Revised Statute, Section ninety-two dash four and subsection ninety-two dash five, subsection A, subsection four, to consult with the Board's attorney on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the Board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities and related to the ring toss game.
We're in executive session. Hey, we're back from executive session where we discussed with counsel, um, the, uh, ability to waive a rule uh, and the question before, um, the Commission.
So. So just so you folks understand, right, I mean, obviously this is a rule and, um, basically, right, I mean, the game itself promotes that. Um, we, we would look at, you're going to determine or change your game. You're going to determine or change your game in some way that would conform with the rule. That would be something that would be there, but I believe at this time, the commission most likely will not accept or approve the request you have currently on the table. Okay? Yeah, so I mean, that's kind of the easiest way to say that that's the rule and we're kind of there. So I guess the question is, I guess we can make a rule on the request and then that way you'll know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll make a motion to deny request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-five-three. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny. Thank you. Um, request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-five-three. Any needs or reservations seeing none. May also vote aye, the request is denied.
Sixteen.
I calling agenda item number sixteen, request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-seven-two, Adult Friends for you.
Mister Hong Shu, L I S A T M A S H I R O.
Deborah Spencer Chan, D E D O R H S P N C E R hyphen C Q N.
And I'll make the same disclosure that the LW represents the employees of Aloheilani Resort and I'm not their direct representative and this will not uh challenge me in being impartial in this matter. Okay.
Commissioners, questions?
I think this is fine.
You basically is just a someone that's under eighteen gonna be performing in a in a hula show, right? Technically, right?
Um, like a cultural, yeah.
A dance or something of that nature. And I believe if I read in your reports, he's gonna be considered part of staff and held downstairs in the same area as the staff. She'll eat uh underage adults that are gonna be helping, correct? Okay, I have no other questions.
Yeah, I'm good.
Make a motion to approve request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-seven-two. Second.
So it moved and seconded to approve request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-seven-two. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the event.
Thank you.
Calling calling agenda item number seven, application number two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-seven dash one to two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-seven dash six, Red Zone Sports Bar and Grill Inc.
Again, good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi representing the applicant. We have no changes or corrections to the investigator's report. This is the fourth special license uh this applicant has applied for. It's takes us through January eleventh. We're also on the agenda for preliminary hearing. Uh, we would expect that this would be the last special license.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions.
Make a motion to approve applications numbers two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-seven dash one to two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-seven dash sixteen inclusive. Second.
So it moved and seconded to approve application number two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-seven dash one to two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-seven dash one-six. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, uh the application approved. Calling out of order, agenda item number ten, application number two-five dash zero-zero-six-two-three, Red Zone uh Sports Bar and Grill Inc.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. Uh, we have no addition, we have no changes to the investigator's report. Would ask this public hearing be conducted seven weeks after today, which would put it on January eighth, twenty twenty-six?
That work? No, I'm gonna have to check first hearing before we make that decision. But I'm gonna have to check with hearings before we can make that decision.
All right. Um.
Okay. So.
He can make the request.
Yeah. And then let let's know.
He can make the request whether we can um beat that will be.
Yeah, we could figure that out. Yeah. Okay. So.
You'll submit as a separate request then for that then.
He's gonna make their request here and then we'll.
Because if um if it's seven weeks, I have to send the uh notice out of Monday. So that's why it's not enough time for another agenda, so. Okay.
That request or.
Not just to approve.
Yeah.
Right, make a motion to approve application number two-five dash zero-zero-six-two-three. Second.
So move and second to approve application number two-five dash zero-zero-six-two-three. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the application is approved. All right. Call it. Agenda item number twenty-two out of order, request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-seven-zero, Red Zone Bar and Grill Inc.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. Uh, I attached an explanation request because Commissioner Hollinger requested something like that, and I think that clarifies it. That's what I'm going to do in the future. This is her um fourth special license. Uh. She got the reduction for the first one, not for the second and third yet, so.
Isn't. Yeah, wait, so thank you for adding, um but I'm also trying to look. Is there any, is, does anyone see any additions beyond the normal?
Yeah, no.
Request for reduction of fees. Okay. So for some reason, it might not have been attached to this portion of the packet, but I thank you for adding what you have added, so we'll have to.
I don't see that.
That all went either.
Yeah, it was it was submitted together, but um.
Didn't make it.
Yeah, I guess it didn't make it in there.
Oh.
But uh we'll.
Cause uh.
Well, what I have is I explained the first special license was from May twenty-third till Ju- July twenty-second. Spec second special license, July twenty-third to September twenty-ninth. Third special license, September thirtieth to November twenty-fifth. And this fourth special license would be from November twenty-sixth to January eleventh. The uh second temp ran out on May twenty-second, which is the information you wanted.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. That covers for me.
So counsel, any reasons why the delay slowed down?
Um, yeah. Uh, this, if you look at who did the report, this is now done by invest chief investigator Sato. So the uh application was pulled and given to somebody else.
So it was assigned to Sato and he passed it on?
No, no, it was assigned to another investigator. And then it was given to investigator Sato. Investigator Sato took the assignment back.
So he took it over when?
Yes. Um. He took it over about November third because the preliminary inspection was done on November fourth, revealed certain discrepancies and we corrected the floor plan.
I wonder whether discrepancies corrected.
On the on the sixth, two days later.
But thank you.
I'm okay with it. Yeah, I have no questions and I'm I'm good.
Make a motion to approve request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-seven-zero. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-seven-zero. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the request is approved. Calling agenda item number eight. Uh, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-nine-eight.
That's right, four-four-eleven.
Oh, okay. So, okay. They they eh? Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Chris Lim, L I M. Um, owner, operator and CEO of uh Beijing Inc. Uh, we are applying for license to serve uh a co- at my restaurant located on the twenty-five-twenty Kana Kawa Avenue. Airport.
Shouldn't there's any questions?
Oh. I have no questions.
Maybe on your red lines, if they really extend out, um.
It's um outdoor seating.
Okay. Yeah, it it, I got it. Wow, all right. Small restaurant.
Yep, I have no questions.
Make a motion to approve for public hearing, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-nine-eight. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-four-nine-eight for public hearing. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number nine, application number two-four dash zero-two-one-one-seven, Red Bar LLP.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Christina O'Hara on behalf of the applicant. I apologize the owners couldn't be here uh this evening. Two of them are on the mainland and of course, the remaining one is at the bar right now. We do not have any um changes to the report.
All right. Shouldn't there's any questions?
So so here I see there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's eight notices from some noise issues. I do see that a bunch of them had no violation issued. Um, but the last two either were warnings or notice of violation issued, so. I think, you know, as we continue to move forward to the public hearing, um if this gets approved, um I think, you know, you might wanna talk with your client about working on getting like a some type of log or something. Um, and that way we're gonna be able to see that what they're doing to fix these concerns, right? And make sure that we're okay with those things.
Yes, and we um, what is in the works now is they're installing some sound dampenings. I think Daniel had put a note that, you know, the noise is emanating from this open air lanai area. So we are installing uh noise dampening curtains that go from the inside to the outside. And then even in the outdoor area itself, we're installing some noise dampening materials along the fence. So we do expect um these complaints to go away.
Okay. That's good news, thank you. Those were my only comments.
No, no offense.
Make a motion to approve application number two-four dash zero-two-one-one-seven for public hearing. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve uh application number two-four dash zero-two-one-one-seven for public hearing. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the application is approved. Calling out of order, agenda item number twenty, request number two-six dash zero-zero-nine-nine-seven, Red Bar LLP.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Christina O'Hara on behalf of the applicant. Um, we don't have any, well, there was no report, but I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the request for reduction.
Are we also, we have everything in?
Yes, this is our um and and we're hoping we don't need this. This is would be our in relation to our fifth set of specials, which is on agenda for actually later. Um, but Daniel had pulled this application and is, you know, obviously you see you just ruled on the prelim. So we're hoping to speed it along, but just in case we might need a little bit of rubber.
Okay.
Was the only reason given for the delay was pending processing?
Yeah, I mean, this application has been in for more than a year. Um, I understand the investigator it was assigned to had several really like tough applications ahead of ours. So I don't necessarily blame him for the delay, cause I know that they do work in the order the applications are received. Um, because it was obvious that he was, you know, struggling through some applications that were ahead of ours. Daniel thankfully took ours back so he could get it processed so that we could be at this hearing today, which I really appreciate.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Make a motion to approve request number two-six dash zero-zero-nine-nine-seven. Second.
So it moved and seconded to approve request number two-six dash zero-zero-nine-nine-seven. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the request is approved. Uh, calling out of order, agenda item number twenty-one, request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-eight, Sunrise Shack Corporation.
Good afternoon, Christina O'Hara on behalf of Sunrise Shack. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the cancellation request.
They didn't open it all, actually, then.
They did not, and so, you know, I guess I would like to apologize for wasting time and resources and having our specials application approved, but for reasons beyond our control, we're not actually able to use the specials and the client is happy to just wait the amount of time it takes for their regular license to be processed, don't you?
Okay. No problem. I'm good.
Make a motion to approve request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-eight. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two-six dash zero-one-zero-six-eight. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the request is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number two-five dash zero-one-four-five-four, Teddy and Tank LLC. Hello.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi. For the applicant to my right is Junior Laura, L O R A H. He's fifty percent member. Uh, behind me is his wife Julie Piotrowski, P I O T R O. W S V I, she's also fifty percent member. Uh, we've read and reviewed the investigator's report. I don't have any additions or corrections, but I think I need to explain what this is and where this is. So this is the old palomino. Yeah, okay. And what happened after for a while, it was uh Marlboro's place, and then after that, uh Watavi took it over, but now it's carved up into uh basically small little kitchens. And so my clients have a space there that's a very small space. And what they're making is limoncello. And the reason uh I suggested the small craft producer pub license is allows them to offer samples, which a regular manufacturing license would not. So that's the reason uh or the, at least my justification for doing that. Uh, this is a new venture for them. Uh, and it it's it's interesting, cause I've never had a client that specialized in one type of liquor. Uh, and limoncello is kind of unique, you know, it's an Italian uh aperitif and uh. So, yeah, it that's why I needed to explain it. It it's a little bit different than your average license.
Yeah, so. Just drinking some the other night.
Very familiar.
Uh, Mr. Kiuchi, looking at the floor plan, the item, the outline in red, is that all wall? Are those walls?
Yeah, those aren't all walls. Yeah. It it's it's kind of a real funny shade. Yes. Because the way it's carved out, but if you remember the old uh palomino, it's almost like a circular type of uh. So you kind of go through this hallway with all of these kitchens nearby and theirs is right off of that, but they've got everything else. If you notice, they got the sink, hand wash sink prep area. So everything is there in a very small space.
I have no questions.
Make a motion to uh approve application number two-five dash zero-one-four-five-four to public hearing. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two-five dash zero-one-four-five-four for public hearing. Needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you, and we're gonna, um, this will just be on the regular eight-week track.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Why you made the limoncello so happy? And that the vote is over.
Let's see to here. Kind of reaction.
Okay. Not biased, a little bit, but not bad. Okay, calling agenda item number twelve, application number two-six dash zero-zero-nine-one-three, HSI Honolulu Venture Company.
Good afternoon, Chair Hong, Commissioners Jiruchikawa representing HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. On my right is Mr. Chris Katahiro, who is the Executive Director of Operations. We had one change to the investigative report and that was to change the DBA name from Waialua Bar and Cafe to Maoka Marketplace. On November seventeenth, a supplemental report was issued to reflect this change and we have no further changes.
Excuse me, Chair. Yeah, for the record, that supplemental report is a copy that's in front of you.
Okay.
And that will be made part of the material distributed at the eleven-twenty meeting page that's gonna be found on our website.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. I have no questions.
Okay, make a motion to approve application number two-six dash zero-zero-nine-one-three. Second. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, one, three, any nasal reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, one, four, HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. EBA Inter Island Terminal Restaurant. Anyway.
Thank you, so Druchikawa representing HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company, on my right is Mr. Chris Katahiro. Uh Executive Director of Operations and um we have no changes to the report.
Okay.
I have no question.
Two non-contiguous spots. Yes. Yeah, I was just wondering, it's two non-contiguous spots, I'd like, there's a little bit of yellow on the map, a little bit of.
Yeah, there's a. I'm sorry, there's there's a a walkway in between the two. If you're entering the Maoko Terminal. From uh TSA checkpoint as you're walking in, there's a Dunkin' Donuts and then there's the bar we're speaking of.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a walkway heading out to the other gates in between that and the Maoko Restaurant. So that's. I wish I could just have one, it'd be great.
Yep.
So I don't have that many space.
Okay, yeah.
Make a motion to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, one, four. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, one, four, any nasal reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you Commissioners.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, five, four, F S M B LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners and Chair Matthew Choi, Manager for. F S M B, uh we have no changes to the investigative report. This is for a pop-up holiday bar at the Loheilani Hotel, it'll be in the lobby right next to the fish tank.
I'll make my normal disclosure, the employees that work at the. Loheilani Resort are represented by the ILWU, I'm not their direct representative and this will not affect my ability to be impartial on this matter.
Thanks, noted. Questions?
None.
No questions. Make a motion to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, five, four. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, five, four, any nasal reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
You.
You. Calling agenda item number seventeen, request number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, two, seven. D T B three, L Q dash one, hello.
Good afternoon Chair, Commissioner bringing show authorization on behalf of the applicant. We have received an investigator subtle report of no changes there too.
Great, okay. Okay Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions.
No question. Make a motion to approve, request number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, two, seven. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The approval request number two, six dash zero, zero, nine, two, seven, any nasal reservation seeing none, I also vote I. The request approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can I have a motion on agenda items number twenty-three through thirty-four?
Yes Chair, make a motion to adopt the findings of fact of decision and orders from agenda items number twenty-three to thirty-four. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt uh findings of fact, decisions and order, agenda item number twenty-three through thirty-four. The nasal reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
To we um. No, I was just gonna say. Chair uh Commissioner has to leave in five minutes, do we want to take a quick recess? Can do that and then. And continue, yeah.
Okay.
Take a short recess.
Take a short. Now good. Alright.
Okay, we're back from recess and we.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five and I don't know the. Processings and procedures. This is a section that we've often had in the past to discuss. The processes and procedures of the liquor commission. We had two items on the agenda. Unfortunately. Investigator Sato is not here, but I give us some further light on this, but entered into the. Packet at this hearing was an email that we had some discussions on this. And so we have two items coming up. So class ten, the special license we've used. For many very flexible purposes. To provide additional licenses after the temporaries have expired for. The nonprofits for the political activities. And so it has been a very useful tool for the commission. One of the items. That has come up recently, I think within the past year, we granted a cabaret license. There was a lot of. Interested in cabaret, cabaret licenses and I'd had some discussions. Couple of years ago with a couple of the other commissioners at the National Liquor Commissioners Convention. And they do different things in different jurisdictions and one here that I think we could do. By combining some of the rules that we have currently or with some of the rules that we have. Coming up in this rules packet and that would be to allow for extended hours and the extension of the hours. Could be done through the special license, the class ten license. And rather than. I think a lot of the. Problems of bars closing strictly at two or strictly at four is that everybody is. Dumped out the door at the same time and it leads to noise and congestion. And the idea here is to. Ease people out and to provide a license to continue selling up until two o'clock. And then. The consumption would need to be complete at three or whatever we kind of decide because. It's a special license. We could put the terms and conditions on it. And there's some operational issues with it. That would be useful to have. Investigator Sato. Come up for, but I wanted to open this discussion. On the agenda now, we'll have it on the agenda.
Yeah, we have it on the next hearing. I, you know, I think it's a innovative idea and we, we do get complaints about the noise. With people coming out and you have more than. A handful of those. And so this could be a possible solution for that, that out. Just trying to figure out how to operationalize the easing out or does it just get pushed up a little?
Well, because people with, you know, complete. Selling at two and they don't have to drink at all. And then it kind of dumps people out at three, but. Nobody's buying alcohol for a whole hour. So there's not as much of a rush on either hand. And kind of stage it there. So it doesn't interfere with the poor people all coming out because that's kind of defeat the purpose.
Then I do think the ultimate question will then come though. When we talk about possibly doing something like this, which is a good idea in the sense of. You have some time to get your bar and get people empty. People that have a cabaret license. Are we then going to say? They have till five AM to get their people out. As if you have two AM to get out at three, I'm sure those that have a cabaret that are at four are going to want to be able to say, well, I can get my people out by five then. So I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm not.
And, and, and you know, some of these are, are. To provide for special days too, as stated in the rules or New Year's Eve or something like that. Similar ideas, but I wanted to bring this up so that we could have a discussion on it and.
Yeah, I think any way to, any way to help. Ease the possibility of people being stuck there. Like, you know, me being now that like two, you gotta be out by two or five. I mean. I'm open to any of those kinds of discussions or thoughts. Yeah, I just think we have to figure out what we're going to do because I also don't. Know if we want guys, a group of people trickling out right at five in the morning when some other people. My heading to work. I'm just.
I'm not, I'm not advocating the, the extension from four to five, only from, from two to kind of three.
Okay, I'm just saying be prepared that you may have people that have their four o'clock license and might want that too.
Well, well, in, in DC. The bar stops selling at four and then you can restart selling at six. So that's a little extreme, but. That was, that was their special holiday weekend, so not that long.
Yeah, I think we hear from Daniel.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. And so there, there are some operational issues.
Is it worth hearing from Glenn and folks because they're.
Oh, yeah. No.
I think we should have, I think when we do something, anything, I think we should have licensing as well as enforcement.
Yeah.
Because obviously that's going to be another, right? Because.
Yeah.
They do to a certain point, right? But then as we've seen, right? As we discussed about our shortages as well, CI ones, we don't have a day crew, right? So. Keeping them longer beyond that time period could be. Something we'd have to figure out.
Right. I see what you're saying.
No, procedurally, this would be a special license request for someone. Put in an application for a class ten.
Yes, so they would do.
They, they would apply for application first and then submit a special license, right?
Oh, no, the, the special is a class ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, just like all these people have done. They're, they're always do that last ten special life. But they may be a dispenser already that wants to do a class ten.
Especially just multipurpose. Okay.
Okay, that was one item. A second item is. There was legislation proposed in the last session. To utilize the special license additionally to allow for off-premise. So this would be like the. The Manchello maker that wants to be at a, at a farmer's market and sell the bottle. So that's not allowed under the rules currently. Well, it's not allowed statutorily. So this was a change that was proposed. And advocated by multiple liquor commissions in the legislature and that I wanted to bring up for discussion.
That's under this one.
It's not item. Oh, no, it wasn't. It's just in the agenda. And so that's something that we're working on. And I wanted to share that.
Yeah, I think with your one.
And a, a final item that I think we should think about is when we grant these large lawn. Special licenses for a year.
Yeah.
Maybe we want to break it up so that they have to come back to us and, and status reports since. It's like we're granting a year license.
Okay. I mean, I, I think. I do think there, I, I think I, I understand your view of wanting to have them maybe come and give us a status update. I do understand that, but I also think though that. Some of that might be hard for some of the licensees only because then that either. Puts a pressure on them to close business to come here or send someone here. Right? And we already have a backlog that we're trying to figure out how to fix. And we're gapping them by these special licenses so that they can operate. So. I'm. I don't know if we want to do something where they're, they're, they're set that they have to come back or if there's a, if there is a. Complaint lodged and someone goes to see them and then it is solidified. Part of that would be. When we grant it, if something happens like that, then you are recommend, we would then want you to come and explain or, you know, I mean. I don't know because if it's a violation, then it could go to adjudication and everything else, but I'm just. I just don't know how we would want to do that, but I do understand the concept.
Because it's like we're granting a license for a year without all of the processes and procedures in place. Only because we think it's going to take a long time, right? And so.
Yeah.
That one's kind of hard. Yeah, I'm just reading that for discussion as our processes.
Kind of leaning toward vice chairs, one of you. We take it if. They go, something comes up and it comes before us and then we can't address it at the time versus requiring everybody to, to do that. I want to lessen the burden on the licensees.
Here he goes well, so.
As we heard even today, a lot of them couldn't make it because they got to open up their partners away. They got to run the business. So we don't want to put any more hardship on that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, and I think maybe as we slowly get. Working or figure out our ways to get our licensing times down, right? Then when you do have these types that are. Going to be that long period, maybe we talk about that because technically you could get it quicker, right? But right now you just can't. Yeah, you know what I mean? I mean.
Hopefully it's not an issue.
Yeah.
There are one year specials.
Yeah.
Really?
Okay.
Appreciate you thinking through things of.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to have an open discussion on this. You know, as we go through pieces of what's coming up, we should.
Yeah.
First discussion.
Okay.
All right.
Definitely.
That was kind of it on that.
Okay, agenda number thirty-six.
Yep, agenda item number thirty-six, the metrics review with Administrator Patilas.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sal Patilas, Administrator Honolulu Liquor Commission. You know, we, I think since the beginning of the fiscal year, we tried to make sure that. There's, there's reporting about how things are going with, with, with our particular sections. And, you know, we're trying to make sure that at least we report. Monthly on, on, on their activities. For this week, I, I thought I would just focus a little bit on, on the enforcement side. And, and then next week, talk more about the licensing side as well. And I think. You had also requested to deep dive into three of the oldest cases that we have. And so I think for that, what I've done is clearly. A chronology of events and made some comments about what I, what I've seen there and. We'll, we'll share that with you and when, when we get to it next week. But in terms of the enforcement. Metrics, I think I showed you last week, last month, anyway. You know, pretty broad coverage throughout the, 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 the city and county. You know, the, the percentages of, of, of licensees. That under, that had undergone routine inspections were, were rising and just one particular. ZIP code hadn't been visited and that particular ZIP code had only one licensing in. So, but I think I also brought out the fact that the, the. The number of licensees visited were lower than last year. And I think for my percent, Doug, if you, if you don't mind putting that on. And as I reported that, you'll see a tremendous jump in October in terms of inspections. The scuttlebutt that I heard was that. Enforcement heard that. I thought they weren't doing enough. That was not my, that was not my intent. And so they did a lot. But I, I was spoken to Chief Investigator Neri as well as Supervising Investigator Dushikata and said. You know, I'm fine with you with, with the group, you know. Doing what it can, given the staffing that it has for any given day or, or, or any given week. You know, because there's that, there's a certain mix of, of experience that has to be in those teams as they go forward. And, and my concern really isn't so much that there's a number of inspections done, but the inspections are thorough. And, 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 and of good quality. So I, I just wanted to send to. I, I spoke to them about the need to do that and not so much try to, you know. We're going to do five hundred this month or whatever. And it all, it's all the question of, of staffing as well. I think. This time around, they had, may have had more, more teams available. As smart people showed out, but I think that this is essential for us not to rush things and to do, and to conduct inspections in, in, in a. In, in, not only in the timing, but, but also in, in a substantive way. So then, you know, that, that's the only message I, I had for.
Okay, so one comment, one question. So by you scrutinizing, we have twice as many investigations done as the previous one. This is the observation. So if you scrutinize licensing, do you think we could? No, I'm, I'm kidding. The, the second part of that.
Ability to react for licensing is not, is not, is not fluid.
Yeah. The second part of my comment is that this was done with the body worn cameras, right?
Right. And so far, so far in terms of body worn cameras, they've gone through two, two, through two of the. Of the, of the cameras and I think they're, I don't know if they've received it or they're wait, still waiting for, for the third set to come in.
Yeah.
They're still waiting for the third set. If it doesn't come in, we'll probably have to decide on just the, on the basis of the two. Those two cameras that, that were tested.
But I guess in your comments as to whether or not they were thorough, I guess you can now review the body worn camera. Material to, to, to see.
So were all the numbers that are visits, were they all? Computer generated stops?
They are. They, they rely on, they rely on, at this point, we're, we're still relying on the, on the. On the randomization application that was developed in-house. There's still some issues, I think. With the, with the, with the vendor produced one. The last time I heard about it. It, it's just a question of, of getting things done. I think they're, they just run more with. I think with the electronic VAR as opposed to randomizer itself, but there's still issues with, with applications.
And. The other question based on the numbers here, do these also include any other stops?
No, these are just, this is just what's called normal routine inspection. Doug, if you don't mind seeing the complaints one. So we have the ability to track not only the, the routine inspections, but also complaints that, that they, that, that, that were investigated.
Like the two.
And, 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 and you see that here.
I, I think what would be good on this report is tell us the number of violations versus warnings that were issued.
Yeah, good suggestion.
The next, next time we'll make sure that those are included.
Amazing how that little rumor mill can double up production.
So I, I think you know, you know.
Means popping out that many stops.
And, and there are many different variety types of, of quote unquote inspections that are on their list of things to do, but. We, I think just focusing on the routine inspections as well as events. Give you, gives the commission any of the things they do and all the other bases. Or in this, in this case, a monthly basis.
Looking forward to getting into this cadence of, you know, concentrating on some set of numbers at every single week. It's a good step.
Yep.
Other questions?
I have another question.
Okay.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-seven, liquor commission processes and procedures for our. Amendments of the rules, the liquor commission has arrived.
Um, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Anna Harae, Assistant Administrator at the Liquor Commission. I am very happy to report that at today's Small Business Regulatory View Board meeting. The board cleared us to go forward to public hearing. So if you want, I can sort of sketch out a rough timeline in terms of what you can expect in the months to come. So the notice of public hearing we have selected is because we're, we need to have a date when all five will be present. Will be January fifteenth. So the notice of public hearing will be actually published in the Star Advertiser December eighth. And what we typically do is when we publish in the Star Advertiser. We physically mail a copy of the notice of public hearing, which contains a great deal of information and how to get the review materials or, or the so-called the board packet. To all of our licensees, we email blast them and we put everything on our website, which would be. The Ramsier color key, the full, the full license, rural amendment packet. Plus the category chart and the comprehensive chart, it's like four items. And they'll also be available. At our front counter for anyone who wants a copy and upon request, we can mail them. So there'll be a lot of information going out heading into the January fifth, January fifteenth public hearing between now and then. Mr. Chen will prepare. A packet for you to use in terms of preparing for the, the public hearing on, on the fifteenth. And yes, once upon a time, we used to schedule the, a rural public hearing on a very, on a separate date from the. From the normal Thursday, we no longer do that because it's, it's hard enough to get five coming on a Thursday, much less saying, oh, and would you mind coming on the Tuesday also? Also are because licensees are accustomed to appearing on Thursdays. Anyway, we will just, everyone's been made aware of that January fifteenth day. So if something can wait. In terms of scheduling, we will push it, you know, just the week so it doesn't get.
That was, that was going to be my. Comment or recommendation. If it's public hearings that need to be done on the fifteenth, we do it, or if it's specials. That need to be done so that they get their thing on the, by the fifteenth, we do them. But other than that, everything else moves because. The last time we did this, I think we were here till eight or nine o'clock at night. Doing just public hearing for rules.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to have, if I had to guess, I don't think you're going to have that same experience this time around. Because there is some, some very specific rule amendment proposals that we're, we were able to drop. From the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two effort to present. So. Public hearing will take place on January fifteenth. Between what administrator, what Mr. Chan will prepare for you and some, maybe you've seen that. Is all the public hearing that is received, both written and oral would be, will be placed in a summary table for you. For, to, to help with your evaluation of what you are hearing because we never schedule decision-making on the same day as a public hearing. So. I'm going to suggest that I think that the matter can come back before you for decision-making in the following month, which is February. So between January and February, what will happen is that you'll get the table. To review the public testimony that was sent in. Administration will be looking at the same. Testimony and developing a rural amendment packet that they would recommend for approval. So this will be scheduled on an agenda in February. It'll come before you with. And you'll see this ahead of time because it'll be part of the uploaded board packet. What administration's recommendation is in terms of the rule package to be adopted. At that time and in connection with the commission's decision-making. If you have changes that you want to make, that would be the time you would make them is in connection with the decision-making. And then that gets approved, rolled up. It goes back before Small Business Regulatory View Board in the next month because they only meet once a month. So that would be March. Clear that because this thing is actually going incredibly smoothly compared to the other time. So, and that, that's good. And so theoretically, the, the transmital to going for the mayor's approval and the city clerk. Could take place in April for effectiveness somewhere, I'd say April, May. And that's a nutshell. And I get to say that because I'm not going to be here to complete the process. So I can. But I think that's.
Okay, for Mr. Chen.
That is a, that's a real, that is a realistic schedule. You know, there's only one big event per month because it just simply takes us that much time. To get on various agendas and to, to be ready.
And it had a five-year on-ramp to get to this point or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. And some of the board members remembered me appearing the last time I was, which was in, which was in twenty-one, December twenty-one. We still remember that because they asked specifically about what happened with the brew pubs and small craft producer pubs. That was the Maui representative. And I said, where, I said, we're, we made an accommodation with respect to the satellite, the satellite locations. And we don't have any pushback going forward. So we're, we're glad that we'll be able to include those two rules in public hearing. She said, she confirmed, yeah, I did not get a call to stop you guys. Wow. And he went, very, it's been a very interesting experience there.
It's, it's interesting that they, they remembered.
Yeah, I know. Well, I mean, I did say that probably the liquor commission is one of the most, actually all the county liquor commissions. We do more rulemaking than almost any other department or agency. In the city and certainly statewide. It's just kind of the nature of the beast. So we're, we appear a lot in that capacity.
Did the Small Business Regulatory Review Board provide any other input or, or see any issues?
No, it was sort of like, actually, the, the, the sign spokesperson was Chair Schick. And he, he led by saying, well, there doesn't seem to be any negative impacts to small business. Any questions? And there was very, there was very real questions. I was pleasantly surprised. It was very. A couple of questions entered. There was one having to do with outside warehousing and actually the. Vice Chair Alvis from Maui wanted to know a lot about our online application and database process. It was, it was pretty nice, actually.
Yeah, and as a, a former SBR.
Cause you were the chair of the last time.
I was there for.
Yeah, you were the chair of the last appeared on the big one.
It was, it was very impressive. You were, you came to us very prepared and. It was a, it was a great, great meeting and, and based on my experiences, obviously, and as you involve stakeholders, which you have done. And will continue to do up to the public hearing. It will afford you to move rather smoothly through the process as long as you're. You know, bringing in the, the people who you're impacting, we are impacting with our rules and they have some level of, of input and or say. As to how it impacts them. They feel like they have a voice, then you generally don't have any issues moving it. So.
Very true.
I don't, I don't foresee any problems. You're going to leave Jimmy with an easy process.
This is, it's a, it's a big project. It's, it's all of them.
Good. Ten years, that was.
Awesome. That's awesome.
It's, it's about some like two hundred six action items. If you add up all the, because and some of it is just a number and location changes. So. That's why I break down that information for them. Because they, I, I could tell from looking at them that they were concerned because the package was so big. Yeah.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much for leading us.
Welcome.
Leaving the ship going in the right.
Thirty?
Yep. Okay, Mr. Patilas, agenda item number thirty-eight.
Once again, Sal Patilas, Administrator Honolulu Liquor Commission. Just a couple of things in terms of operations. I think. You all know that Commissioner Yu is going through his refinement process. He attended the second hearing, which was held on the eighteenth. So one more to go. Hopefully no, no, no issues. Just like the first and second. And also I just want to let you know that, you know, I, I, I think you, you, you indicated that during one of the agenda items that. Surprised Supervising Investigator Sato is not here. So. Supervising Investigator Sato, Supervising Investigator Dushikata. Chief Investigator Neri, as well as auditor Stacy Jiang went to the ANLPA Annual Conference. Hoping to hear good things from them about what, what they, what they learned there. And I think, I don't know if they mentioned this the last time, but actually. Supervising Investigator Dushikata is actually doing a presentation about one of the cases that, that was handled here. Assistant Administrator Harae took one of my items away and probably a, a better discussion about that, the rulemaking than I would have been able to provide. Also, we finally finished our, our interview of Bubkela internship candidates.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Excuse me?
What candidate?
Bubkela. It's a city. It's a city, it's a city driven internship and the good thing about that is that. We are interviewing candidates to assist in IT projects, so I think that, that's, that's important. At, at this point in time, we, we seem to be doing okay in terms of, of hiring LCI ones, we have a couple more. Positions still open and we're trying to, trying to fill those. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're going to help, have them help out with the data migration to terminate L C I S.
Do I, not, maybe not turn, maybe just.
I have no question.
Question, okay.
All right, agenda item number thirty nine, announcements and announcements.